Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Langston County Council to order. If you would, please stand and, oops, let me read the little opening statement thing here. I call this meeting in Langston County Council to order. I ask that our clerk note for the record that a quorum of council is present, that the public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building, and on the county website, and the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. I welcome you to your county council meeting. I would ask that you take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers. Thank you for not wearing any caps or hats in the council chambers, and please be considerate of others in the room by refrating from conversations during the meeting. I ask that you please stand and join council for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation given this afternoon by Ms. McGriff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we move into this review, uh, meeting of the budget, please provide us with guidance and wisdom as we look at what is necessary and needed for this county. I ask you this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion for Ms. McGriff to have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Neal. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to item 5A, Presentation to the County Administrator's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Mr. Marsdall.
Thank you, Chairman Carnes. To you and council members, I am pleased to start the presentation of the FY '26 County Administrator's Recommended Budget. I want to first thank our budget and finance team with our CFO Sabrina Harris, our Budget Director Jamie Proustnak, and Budget Analyst Josiah Park, plus all the department directors and their staff who have helped to formulate this budget. Also, a quick note of appreciation to the Assessor's Office, the Auditor's Office, and the Treasurer's Office, as they have also assisted in this development, particularly with the revenue projections. And lastly, I want to thank you as county council. We started this process with the council retreat in February, and we presented you with some concepts on how we might improve service delivery, particularly in public safety with fire and EMS response, as well as with the Sheriff's Office and animal control. We have talked about our enterprise resource planning to bring our financial systems and software up to current day standards. We talked a lot about investing in staff, from across the board pay increases to pay for performance and potential new benefits. You have heard directly from the department directors, and now we've put it all together to present the Administrator's Recommended Budget. As you will see, the county's button, uh, budget is certainly impacted by the continued and historic population and development growth throughout the county. This puts a demand on county services, yet provides some additional revenue, particularly as we work to defer diversify our local tax base between residential and commercial, but also industrial rate payers and other revenue streams, including the sales tax. This year, we've had more requests than resources, as is typical, but I am confident that we are presenting a responsible budget that supports the strategic plan and council member priorities, maintains our financial strength, invests in our employees, maximizes resources and funding, and supports service enhancements. And with that, I will turn it over to our CFO Sabrina Harris to start the formal presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marsdall. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'd also like to extend the same thank you to all of the participants in the budget part. Um, process has been a long and intensive, um, process, and so to every department head, the elected officials, our external agencies, to our administrator, and to you all for your support with that. We appreciate that. All right, so I'll start us off, just looking at some of the impact of our growth in the county. Um, our county continues to experience growth, um, looking at our population increasing by 3.1% um, in just 2024 alone. Over the past five years, the county has grown by 16.4%, um, which, um, it's increased by 16.4% over the past five years. So that's an indication that it's not just a trend, so something we might expect to continue to see, um, over the next few years. Um, and we know that the growth places pressures on our infrastructure and public safety and all of our services that we provide. And so you'll see as we walk through this budget, how we have been very intentional to try to address each of those areas. And so the admin's recommended budget focuses on investments in both supporting staff and operations. All right, so we'll look at some of the key indicators from some of the focus areas, starting with violent crime in our detention center. And so we know that, again, with growth comes challenges with, with public safety, the grant-funded positions in violent crime. Um, we see that the cases that they've investigated, 144, and these positions, they not only cover investigations for those types of cases, but they also support where we might have requests from our external agencies. Um, the data also shows, um, the numbers for incidents related to our jail population, medical incidents, and even those involving animal control. But the medical incidents that we have listed here for detention center, they include the, um, well, they don't include regular sick calls, medication distribution, and it does not include any booking or pre-booking screenings that are done. All right, looking at our public safety and EMS, and again, our numbers for response times, um, call volumes, patient transport, um, show significant demand on our emergency services. In our parks and recs area, um, as our population grows, also the demand grows for services like recreation programs and access to parks. So we can see our performance indicators here show how our facility usage, um, as well as community engagement, and the amount of park space that's available for use. In our auditor's office, um, another indicator of growth, um, which we well know, um, in 2024, the auditors build for over 6,100 real property. That's up from 50, um, just over 50,000 four years ago. And also vehicle billings increased to over 114,000. Um, that's a significant increase from just over 82,000 in 2022. And so, again, those figures don't just reflect the growth, but it also highlights the corresponding administrative work that's required to process these functions. And in our activity with our building permits, we look at our year-over-year changes for both residential and commercial activity, um, showing the comparisons here. Um, but it also reflects for us that companies, they want to operate within the county, and people want to buy homes and live within the county. All right, within our roads, um, fleet and facilities, we are currently maintaining just a little over 302 miles of paved roads. And while the unpaved roads have remained mostly stable, there's still ongoing maintenance that has to happen to those roads. Uh, we have a fleet of 680 vehicles that includes our trailers and other equipment, and those items also require ongoing maintenance as well as addressing replacement. And, yeah, just finally, in our facility space, we have 73 facilities, 63 of those with, um, surrounding grounds. And so we know we have a great, um, building maintenance team that keeps those up, um, even with our facility space increasing. In our IT, um, our technology area, since 2016, our IT assets inventory has grown to just over 350,000, um, with more than 200, um, $2.6 million in value. Um, and this includes hardware like servers, network gear, um, car modems, um, camera systems for our public safety. And just in 2024 alone, we've acquired a million dollars in technology assets, and our IT team makes sure that our technology is secure and stable. And then lastly, we have our, um, indicators related to our elections and our voter registration, um, reached over 74,000 in 2024. Um, that's an increase of almost 5,000 since 2022, and that includes, um, over 40,000 early voters. All right, so, um, as we, I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question just?
Yes, sir.
Before we get to the next general fund revenue section?
Yes, sir.
On the impact of growth, we had 302.21 miles of recorded paved road. How much of an increase is that over the last five years?
Would you know that?
We can write that question down. I don't know if we have it off the top of our head, but if Jeff has something for us.
There wouldn't be much considering that we closed, we accepted some new roads, made a bunch of new.
Developments, sir.
About three miles of issue. We were at about 299 in the last four years.
Okay. So it hasn't changed much?
No.
Okay.
All right, so that, I'm just a snapshot of some of our key performance indicators, understanding that with the growth, um, those items that are very measurable, like our population, um, our service demand, infrastructure, technology, um, all of those things are a factor in looking at not just the revenue that we have, but the potential revenue that we'll, um, have as a part of growth. And so I'll invite our, um, Budget Director Jamie Proustnak up to talk about our revenue projections and overview our key funding sources.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Dennis, and good afternoon, everyone. Regarding, regarding general fund revenue, are you getting a lot of static? The following slides are, um, they are familiar to you. You have seen these slides at your April workshop. Uh, first is your ad valorem tax. This is your tax on real property. And what you see here is you've got your actuals of what we've collected. You see the FY '26 proposed budget, and then you see a three-year forecast. So as of April 15th, 2025, we have collected 36 million in the real property tax. This is shaped like a bell curve in terms of collections. So we're very confident that we have what we have for this number. And we also know that this is a reassessment year, and so more to come with reassessment. The year-over-year percent change is about 8%. And when we talked with Brad Carnes, our assessor, about, you know, what do we anticipate as far as growth? So what we budgeted in FY '25 to what we should be budgeting in FY '26, it was at 2.2 million. The vehicle tax is next. This is your tax on personal property, and as you know, this comes in all year round. So whenever folks are paying, whenever residents are paying their, um, vehicle tax bills and getting their CAGs updated, they pay this and the road improvement fee. So you've got, uh, again, the same pattern, three years of actual collections. Uh, in that middle column, you'll see we, what we are proposing, 5.5 million as revenue for FY '26 and three years out. This is where we did no more than an 8% modifier here of growth, and we consulted with our, um, Auditor's Office, Ms. Falkenberry, on number of bills and Ms. Suzette. And so a lot of this background methodology is based on historical data trends and what we bill. 1% local option revenue. This is related to the, it's a sales and use tax. And so we are proposing 4.3 million. And you see that line, that trend line is going up. We anticipate with the opening of Costco, Target, some of these big box retailers, that we would be collecting more revenue in, um, a point-of-sale revenue. And so you could see at the bottom of the slide, April 15th, what we have collected, and then, um, what the current year budget is, is in that lower corner. Uh, this, we used a modifier of about uh, 4% to 6% change. Building permits. Darren was very influential as far as discussing the number of permits collected and what we can anticipate in the future in this area for revenue. Uh, we know that we have some residential divisions opening along 521, other places, and then, of course, commercial permits. And so we are proposing a 5 million, 5.2 million budget here for building permit revenue. And, um, we know monthly, I want to say monthly what we collect here because we have such a big swoop, uh, we collect on average $428,000 monthly in building permit fee revenue. Interest income. Local governments are allowed to invest idle cash, and so, um, the local government investment pool, uh, has a interest rate on idle cash, investment interest rate of 4.5%, and that's as of March 2025. We bring in roughly $265,000 each month in, um, interest on our idle cash investments. Whoops, excuse me. Ambulance charges. Mr. Clay Cato has his eyes, very good at watching this particular revenue source, Mr. Cato is. And so we, um, have a growth here of about 4.9%. And we do know that, um, we should be looking carefully at tariffs here, uh, but we do have a 3.9 million, uh, revenue budgeted for FY '26. We know collections as of April 15th is 3.1. This particular slide, now, as you may be scribbling at math, when you're looking at this particular slide and you're taking the difference between the FY '25 adopted budget and what we're proposing for FY '26, that's how the numbers are compiled in that second column. And so that's going to total to about 8 million. Now, this, of course, is a best-case scenario for what we think we will collect in revenue in these areas. And, but it's important also to know that we're not fully utilizing this amount, this 8 million. Later, you'll see we are using a much more conservative amount, about 6.9 in what we expect to get in revenue over the FY '25, uh, adopted budget. We do have other priorities that council would wish to approve, so you do have some wiggle room here with the 6.9 versus this 8 million number. And we also do not know the impact of the tariffs and the sales tax. I want to say that again. This is an overview of your general fund revenue in the top six. That is a compilation of those line item charts and the total, and the FY '26 total is the 61.2 million. We had a little conversation around state aid to subdivisions, and, um, that number is popular, that's a formula that we receive from the state, or it's based on population as well. Register of Deeds, uh, that's another large revenue source in the general fund. So you see the top six, followed by a series of rather large revenue sources in the general fund. And then also in the general fund, your fund balance, your savings is considered a revenue source. And so we have, which you will see later, 4.8 million to be appropriated in fund balance. The asterisk on the bottom is where your road improvement fee is. In that 25.4 million number, you have your road improvement fees. You have the rollback local option sales tax portion. Um, and then, of course, Park and Rec has a significant, um, amount in revenue that they collect. So without further ado, I will turn the floor over to our Budget Analyst, Josiah Park, who will propose to you changes to the annual fee schedule. Thank you.
Hello, council members. Josiah Park, Budget Analyst. Uh, thank you for, um, taking the time to look these over. Uh, just a quick reminder that these, um, proposed fee schedule changes were presented department director presentations, um, a couple of weeks ago. So these are them compiled together. Starting off, we have changes, uh, with the airport. This is a text revision to two of our fees, um, adding a minimum of three hours for the airport after-hours call-out fee, as well as the airport manager after-hour fee. At the animal shelter, uh, we have a couple of check, uh, text revisions, as well as a fee increase. When it comes to redemptions, uh, we are deleting the microchip text and replacing a, or increasing the fee to $30 to cover increases in vaccine costs. We also are increasing the aggregate, or total fee for altered cat and altered dog services by $10, uh, again, to cover increasing costs, um, of medications. At the circuit court and clerk of court, we are increasing, are proposing to increase the current fee of $2.50 a copy for certified copies to $10 a copy. Delinquent taxes asking to add a bidder registration fee, uh, at $25 a bidder for their sale. Emergency management is requesting to align their fees with the national standard for emergency response to hazardous materials, as well as other standby events, uh, commercial fireworks displays and such. So you can see those have increased as well. EMS is increasing their standby service fee to better compensate, or better, um, recollect on staffing costs. Family court, as well as, um, circuit and clerk of court are likewise increasing their copy fees from $2.50 to $10 a copy. Parks and Recreation has several proposed fee changes. Um, the first one is actually a decrease, um, for the all-day program fee for teacher workdays and holidays, from $25 a child down to 12. Swim, swim lessons will be increased from $50 a person to 65 for the ages of three to 17. They're also adding a nonprofit, um, tag to, uh, pool party rentals to allow for the nonprofit discount, um, for those activities. Across the board, and you can see as they go, this is a, this is reflected as a $20 discount per category. So, uh, normally for a 77-person pool party, you would be paying 150 an hour. The nonprofit rate will get you down to 130. Parking lot rentals, um, as Mr. Cloudon had mentioned, would allow people to actually rent and reserve, um, our parking lots at our facilities for use, that $75 an hour. Uh, the nonprofit rate there would be a $15 deduction from that. Special event rentals at $50 an hour. And finally, revising the text for food truck, daily private events, um, to reflect the, specifically for the daily and private nature of it. Facility rental deposits would be a new fee, um, only collected again if there was damage or any reason to void that, uh, deposit fee for any of the facilities we would be renting out. Uh, Probate Court, uh, wanted to clarify, um, an estate opening fee and add a note of $25 plus an errors fee. Um, the first one, as is standard practice now, is free, plus 50 cents per subsequent error notified. Property valuation as well would be $25 deducted from the total estate open, uh, estate valuation as well. And finally, uh, Van Wack Fire, uh, would, asking to move their fee from $90 to $180 a unit.
Sherri, can you move that forward? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into the operating budget, I would like the, uh, the projected fund balance going forward, in the, uh, you know, we got all these projections. What, what is our unassigned fund balance projected to be for this, uh, next fiscal year? Compared to last year, too?
Okay, give me, um, just a second, because we actually have a slide, um, that talks about exactly that. So give me just a second, and I'll let you know where we can jump to. Sherri, do you mind advancing to that?
Before, when we get to that, I'd just like to know what it was last year.
At the end of 2024, the audited amount is the 55,467,741.
Okay, I see it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's about, okay. All right, thank you.
I, I've got a question about, I'm, I think I'm missing something on the estimated new revenue. So I'm looking at page 23. So what, what am I missing? Because, so it says a local option revenue, um, 1,039. But when I look at the difference between the FY '26 proposed budget of 4307 and the 25-year-end projection, that's obviously not a million dollars. So what am, what am I missing?
Because if we look at slide 23, this is the estimated new revenue. Sherri, if you wouldn't mind rewinding us back to slide 23, the estimated new revenue is just what we expect based on growth.
So, but when you're looking at, when you're looking at page, at slide 19, and you've got a proposed, FY proposed budget of 4307?
Right. Slide 19 shows the proposed budget overall, and of that number, 1,039,862 is what we've estimated for growth alone.
So when the, what is, I'm sorry, what, I'm missing something. So for FY '26, on, on slide 19, it says FY '26 proposed budget, 4,307,000. And then it says the FY '25 year-end projected says 4,440,000. So where, my question is, I'm missing where, what's, what's, what's the, I don't understand what's happening there.
The difference there is 163,000.
Right.
Where's the?
Where's the $900,000? So I'm, either I'm missing something, and it's the same, like, for, same thing for, um, interest income is, is really different as well.
Right, so when we start.
I'm missing something.
Right, so if we can just, if we can land on slide 19, and, and I'll talk us forward from there.
Okay.
Okay? And so when we look at the bottom where it has the budgeted amount, that was what we budgeted for the current year. And what the year-end projection is showing is that we've actually collected more than what we had estimated in the budget.
The budget is 3,267.
Correct. The, the budget, right.
So that FY budget, so basically, the, the difference is based off of the proposed budget for '25, not actual.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, we've used the actuals as a means for helping to estimate what we do expect to collect in the new year.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
For the, people who are looking at this, we're saying it's a bold number at the bottom is what we're using. For people who are looking at this on screen, it's a bold number versus the proposed budget number.
Okay. Any more questions there? Okay.
Actually, I, I did a local option revenue. So you had said that we're anticipating a 4% to 6% change? I, I guess what I'm looking at is where we started out in 2024, where we're projected to end in 2025, and then what we're looking at for 2026, which I would assume also includes all the new commercial development that's coming along.
Yes, sir.
I would think that that number would be higher.
Um, I don't have in front of me where we started in '24. So if I'm looking at fiscal '24, that's the actual number. And then we budgeted in '25, the 3.26 that we have listed at the bottom.
Right.
But we are projecting based on what we But we are projecting, based on what we have actually collected, significantly more than that at the 4.044.
Right.
And so what's your question from there? Because I want to make sure I answer your question.
So I'm, I'm looking at what we're proposing for 2026, when the difference is significantly higher than what we've budgeted and where we're ending up. Should that number for 2026 be higher?
Your suggestion, we should make a larger projection for this revenue source.
Correct.
But you also say we're, we're being very conservative according to trends, and I think that's what they're looking at also.
Well, yeah, I mean, your local option sales tax, the last two years, you're at around 12% growth, and then you're projecting 6.5% growth for the next year with knowing Target, Costco. My concern is, is what I've voiced before, is that we're, we're being conservative, and then we're layering over another conservative. Like, we're being conservative in the projection, and we're saying that we've got $8 million more dollars, and then we're taking another haircut off of it again, if that makes sense. So we're being conservative on top of being conservative. So that's, that's, that's something I've said previously as well.
Mr. Chairman, we might be a little conservative on that. I have a concern on the other way on the building permits, because there, we're showing like $5 million projections. You know, that's a, that's one that can drop off a cliff in a minute. I think.
Yeah, and I think we, we have to be conservative to a point, because if we're looking at trends, and we know trends can change, but we've got to base it on something. I would much rather be conservative than find ourselves in a pinch, because we can always go back and do revisions, and we can't.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just don't want us to see us cut something that we should be doing, because we're being too conservative, and then we end up with a surplus at the end of the year. That's, that's kind of what I'm, you know, I think that's what we try to balance.
And I think that's up for debate.
I, I think we do probably have a double-edged sword hanging over us, because prices are going to increase based on tariffs, but it also may work the opposite way, in that people won't be buying as much, so.
So the hope is that we've addressed both concerns. We do understand the growth, and we know what our trends have done, and that we've always trended up, but the unknowns are what might be the impact of tariffs, what might be the impact of spending, once we do open those to big-box retailers. And so to try to find the sweet spot in between is where we are. All right, any other questions there, before I take us back to the operating budget?
One, one question. We talked about the fund balance. What is the amount that we've got to keep in there to be, to keep our credit rating?
It's 28% to 32% of our general fund operating, and so we calculate that based off of our general fund. Whatever we adopt in our general fund budget, we calculate it off of that each time. So right now, we are, I believe, right about 58%, at 58% when our criteria, our requirement is within 28 to 32. All right, so looking at our budget development process, and just kind of overviewing some of the things that we've already been able to accomplish within this year, there's been work to streamline and maximize taxpayer support, starting with being able to implement a electronic payment processing service for vendors, to be able to get them payments more timely, cut fewer AP checks, and there's also a rebate associated with that program. We've been able to implement that successfully, and also onboard several of our vendors onto that process. In several of our departments, we've implemented an express bill pay process, where electronic payments can be made, either online or at the counter, in several of our departments, treasures, animal shelter, EMS library, corner, and delinquent tax. And there's an ongoing effort to expand that into other departments that do collect payments. The Registered Deeds was able to complete a project to digitize and document index their deeds and plat records. That was an ARPA-funded project, and so they've been able to successfully complete that. Also have been able to complete a mid-year salary increase for EMS and fire, and we are actively working with a vendor who is auditing our wireless landline and technology services to be able to identify any savings or efficiencies that we can realize there. Next slide. All right, so we are also looking at any multi-year funding issues that we know we need to address, specifically solid waste tipping fees, entire disposal, making sure we meet de-HEC requirements to avoid any penalty, addressing the sheriff's vehicle replacement program, and also looking at our policy as it relates to mileage and the age of vehicles, enhancing the 24/7 fire staffing program, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, in a little bit more detail later, and making sure that we address any ongoing supply chain issues that might occur, especially with vehicles and equipment, addressing inflation as it occurs, and again, any impacts of terror, trying to be mindful of what that impact might be. As a part of the budget development process, we've also, we've talked about before how we've been able to realign the budget forward, departmental software to bring forward more transparency there, make sure that we can accurately report. We've addressed pending legislation as it relates to health insurance premiums, the impact on the employer and the employee share, making sure that we address any funding that's needed for housing juvenile detainees, and trying to right-size that budget for the activity there. Looking at how we can more effectively maximize the use of our general fund, unassigned fund balance, and I'll outline that later as well. And also, we'll potentially recommend amending our personnel policy that we approved a few months back, to delete the GSA rates for travel, and potentially default back to our flat per diem rates.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We're talking about, we've got new soft, software for transparency and accurate reporting. I would make the proposal that, you know, the, whatever we spend is the people's money. Other than payroll, I believe we need to be at the cutting edge, and be one of the first counties to put our checkbook online and let people know what we are spending. And with the new software, the enterprise, whatever you call it.
You go to Hispanic.
I would like for council to consider this in the near future, and look at possibly researching that if I were to ask you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would, I think that's a great idea, especially because, as you mentioned, it is the people's money, and just having that transparency available would be huge.
All right, thank you. All right, so looking at some of the major factors that I'll go over in a little bit more detail in the budget are addressing things like the enterprise resource planning or ERP software, looking at new positions, other salary adjustments, specifically making sure we address that health insurance potential increase, and also investments in our employees with across-the-board increases, targeting specific positions for potential pay adjustments, looking at some of our other operating requests, also potentially the pay for performance with the floating holiday, and so the, not any real emphasis around the dollar amount for that, but just as a potential option for later, as an incentive for employees, and also considerations for other employee benefits, like a 401K or vacation buyback. All right, so just drilling down into the administrator's recommended budget, next slide. All right, I will highlight the staff and operations investments. A county-wide salary increase for employees, definitely to improve morale, but also to attract and retain staff to this county, folks that will come and stay. Looking at increasing the minimum pay for full and part-time staff, making sure that, that we identify full-time positions to help strengthen service deliveries in some of the areas that, you know, has been a significant increase on, or demand on their services, pay adjustments for critical roles, and to continue our Christmas supplement. Next slide. And so some of the highlights in looking at the staff investments are a 5% across-the-board salary increase is being recommended for both full and part-time employees, for approximately 200, 2.6 million, increasing the minimum pay for all of our staff that are below 15, increasing that minimum to $15, $15 an hour, to the tune of $452,000. The Christmas supplement, addressing all approved positions would be $475,000, and again, the pay for performance with the floating holiday. And so just looking at some of the position adjustments, you'll see these are some of the key areas that are being impacted by just the increase in activity in their areas, and so trying to address some of those, you'll see where there's a request to bring positions to minimum pay, or either upgrade positions in, like auditor's office or assessor's office, the building inspections, upgrading multiple positions there for individuals that are in, you know, retention-critical positions, so it's hard to keep people, hard to get people. We have folks there that have a lot of longevity, and we want to make sure that we keep those people. As well as looking at our maintenance techs, another hard-to-fill, hard-to-recruit-for position, and upgrading our facilities maintenance director pay. In an effort to support the 24/7, 24/7 fire staffing model at the McDonald Green Firehouse, you'll see upgrades for firefighter positions to captain, well, the firefighter engineers to captain, upgrading two of those positions, as well as upgrading to firefighters to the engineer position. And the dollars there include the overtime and all the uniforms and equipment required to be able to do that, but that's in support of the 24/7 staffing. We're covering the required 2.5, 2.25% cost-of-living increase for the probate judge, as well as upgrading of one of the road maintenance positions.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Wirth.
Concerning the probate court's salary, the state is increasing it 2.25. The county's doing a 5% across-the-board, and how will that affect that probate judge position?
Yeah, we did reach out to the state just to get confirmation on exactly how we need to address that, and the probate position would be eligible for the state's cost-of-living increase, as well as any increase that we do.
We'll be giving that position a 7%, 7.25%.
Yes, ma'am.
And is that fair with our employees? Just asking.
Well, I think the probate court judge receives compensation from both the state and the county, so.
Correct, and so we just follow the state guidelines.
5% on what her county pay is, she should get the same increase on her county pay as, as all the other employees.
I understand that, but we're giving our employees 5%, and we're giving a elected position that's mandated through the state, a 7.25 position. I'm just asking, is that fair?
Yeah, we're paying that, too. That's an increase for us. Isn't that correct, Dennis? We're doing the 5%, and that 2.5, whatever it is.
2.25.
2.25, we paying that also.
Yeah, that'd be on top of it, because that's a state mandate, and yes, my recommendation's a 5%, so it'd be a 7.25.
Not from the state, but from the county.
5% from the county, and then the 2 point, what, unfunded? Yeah, it's unfunded, it's unfunded mandate from the probate court, yes.
Is that fair?
Fair or not, I'm following the state guidelines on how I address that position.
Well, I'm gonna go on record saying it's not fair, even though we've got to do it. It's another unfunded mandate, and I think it reflects on our employees and the rest of the cross-the-board employees. Do we have any state legislatures in the House?
Well, we, we, we did, I said, we asked a question for the state, and we can provide you that response back, but that is the guidance that we were given.
But we could change the pay for the probate court to 2.25, or 2.75, whatever, so it's 5% across, or, I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah, I'm saying, can we lower it to 5% that we're giving to, to equal out to 5%?
We posed that question, and they said, any raise given, because as a county employee, any raise given to county employee, that position should receive.
If it's a state employee.
And then this, and then this on top.
But if we don't say all county employees get a 5% increase, we only say these employees get a 5%, could we say that?
Yes, I got you. If you want to delineate, if you want to delineate.
We could bifurcate them and isolate this one role to a different percentage.
We've done that before.
I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah, we've done that before.
That's what I'm asking.
You've done that the last couple of budget seasons.
I, I don't know. I would imagine this is a mandate from the state to try to attract more qualified candidates for this job, and it's a.
We only have one probate.
And I would be against, I would be for the.
I'm just saying, is it, it's not fair. We only have one probate judge. We're not looking for a probate judge at this time. When it, if it comes up, we'll talk about that salary at that time, but this is just another unfunded mandate by the state, and we keep doing it, we don't question it, we just do it. But when we're giving everybody else a 5.5% raise, and we're doing this particular position, when we can manage, when we can work around it.
So I, I'm not, I'm not making any comment either way, because I kind of agree with Mr. Harper, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something to Charlene, that she's always telling me. Are we nitpicking here?
No. That's one position.
Just saying it, because the total amount is $2,901 out of a $100 million budget.
I'm not the nitpicker, but, but I'm saying, I questioned that in the beginning, when you presented this budget. I asked you that question, you researched it. Now, let's not talk about nitpicking, you took our stipend last year, so, and it was only $7,000.
And I will do it again this year.
We don't have it, so let's not talk about that. But anyway, I just want to go on record saying, it is not fair. I don't know what the state has mandated, but would it not be great if we could give all our employees 7.25 raise? Would that not be great? Would that not be great?
Of course it would. I mean, we have various elected officials that receive state stipends for, for their salaries, so I don't know that we want to open that can of worms and go down that hill, because, especially if you're going to say, okay, we're just, we're gonna say everybody gets a 5% raise except for the probate judge, and I think that flies right in the face of what the state has said that we need, that we should be doing.
I said I want to go on record.
Okay, duly noted. Charlene is now a fellow nitpicker.
Welcome, welcome.
Duly record, Charlene is now a fellow nitpicker.
Welcome to Jose's world.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in, in total, just looking at position adjustments, there's 17 positions recommended for either some type of reclassification or adjustment, for a total of $370,000 and change. Next slide. All right, so as a part of preparing for next year and supporting growing demands, we're looking at, we've looked at all of the departmental requests, you know, very carefully, and so these next few slides are just outlining the recommended new positions for next year. And so you'll see, in the same areas that we've already discussed, where the, you know, workload is increasing, and it's weighing heavily on the, the staffing there, just to be able to try to balance out, making sure that we still provide quality service, and supporting departments with what they need. So just to highlight a few, looking at the building maintenance, the maintenance aid that's being recommended, will also support the detention center, and then the positions for the detention center, those four detention center corrections officers, the recommendation is that they would start January 1st of next year.
Let's stop right there, man, I got a question on that. Is this administrative assistant building maintenance, what is the role, what is that?
That's actually for all of public works, and so it will be housed in the brick building, because, depends on how we go forward with our road program, what we've got going on in the work program, but it will support, public works doesn't have much administrative support, and so it will support building, it'll be in the building maintenance budget, but it'll support public work roads and solid waste. So it'll be one position that will support all of public works, but it'll be in the building maintenance budget.
Okay, but they'll be doing public works?
Yeah, all exclusively, they'll be assisting the director significantly.
Like another secretary for them?
Yes, administrative support, yep, absolutely. As we continue to ramp up with capital product sales tax, our road program and different things, making sure they got the support to get all the bids processed, payments processed, and do all the things that we need for our growing county.
We'll put a star on that one, we'll see, how much I think about that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right, looking at our, just highlighting a few other positions here, the three EMTs in the first line, the goal there is to support a collaboration between emergency medical and Indian land fire, with a new service model where there will be one EMT and one firefighter in an SUV, to be able to provide non-emergency lift assistance. And so you'll see positions that we've discussed before, in finance with the grants coordinator, in IT with ERP application coordinator, to support implementation of the new software, as well as in IT, the IT technician, that position also supports the EMS equipment needs. Next slide. All right, here for Parks and Rec, a recommendation for two park rangers that will support the regional park staffing, as well as the two violent crime investigators for the sheriff's office, previously grant-funded positions. This grant will end at the end of September this year, and so the funding will support the last nine months to add those positions to the general fund. And lastly, the general, I'm sorry, the sheriff's animal shelter scenario, where we're actually adding four new positions there, and so, the arrangement there would be that in the sheriff's office, originally, the request was for four new deputies, and so right now, there are three staff that are performing duties as animal control, and those three positions will be converted to deputies, and so we would only need to add one new deputy, and in the animal shelter, we would add three new animal control officers, which are at a lesser cost, and the non-personnel costs that would go along with them as well.
You're not really adding staff to the animal shelter, you're just transferring?
It is, it is an add for the animal shelter, so the conversion is actually happening in the sheriff's department. So the three positions that they currently have that are doing the animal control work, they would convert to regular deputies, and so they would.
It's just an upgrade for the sheriff, but we've got to add three staff members at animal control.
Right, and it's technically not an upgrade, it's cost-neutral for the sheriff for those three positions, they would just be doing different work.
Mr. Marshall, the next EMS station, the one with, one at Indian Land or Van Winkle Road. When will that one be built?
That will be starting under design this fiscal year, so we could start on that probably this summer. Yeah, we started to design that this summer. As part of the, you'll see the capital product sales tax.
Okay, so the, the three EMTs will go, none of those will go to that new station?
No, that's, yeah, these three are for the Indian Land Fire Joint Program.
How many more?
What we need for the station, for the station?
I mean, the, that's, the one thing I look at is response times, and I think EMS is what, 11 minutes or something, and that's scary, because I'm a fat old man, in them two minutes, that heart attack might kill me, where I could have at least got five more years. So, we, that, to me, that's a top priority of funding, is that EMS station and funding it, because we're sending, I think, the roof of Lancaster up there, and everybody is hurting, I mean.
I mean, especially as Roswell's coming online as well, I mean, you're building another 55 and older, and those people are starting to go in those houses in June of this year, so, I mean, you start putting more pressure.
I would like to see that fast-track somewhat.
What are you saying, what do you want, how do you want?
You're just saying.
I just wondered, how many more, what we got to have to, to me, that's the number one.
Staffing requirement for.
Of coming up.
That's a clay question, clay.
And so, actually, let's, we'll come back and work on it, let's match the timeline with what we need for the station, and so we'll come back with you, we'll match the timeline of the construction with the staffing that we need for the station. And so, yeah, we'll address that. So we'll come back to you, we'll get you an answer on that.
Hear that? Well, we're just here to ask questions.
I got one more question before we move on, is park rangers for the Parks and Rec, is that like security? Are these people actually going to do anything besides walk around?
They're going to do operational roles, but these are the ones that we're calling that will be out on nights and weekends to help with events, but also they'll have operational things, maybe do trash, pick up and other things, turn off lights, gates, different things like that.
So they're going to move from field to field?
Yeah, they'll be roaming around the county.
Okay, they won't be designated at certain.
Oh, they may, I mean, like, one of them may be between Walnut Creek and Harrisburg, I mean, certainly have some areas, but this will also help us start building that staffing support as we think to the staffing for the regional park. But, yeah, this in particular one will help us on the nights and weekends, being at our facilities.
But they actually going to do something besides?
Oh, drive around, yes. Well, they'll be engaging with the participants and being out on the field as we have, make sure we don't have issues, but they'll be visible and present, but they'll also have functions to check on doors, locks, gates, lights, trash, parking lots, yeah, they'll have operational responsibilities.
So, as we move further into building that new station, we'll look at personnel and staff at that time, and when do you think that'll be, mid-year?
We'll have, I'd say, we're going to work on that timeline, we'll give you the staffing with that. I can give you some information on that before our next meeting.
Okay.
Can we talk about, like, what positions were, I don't know, the next ones in, as I would call it, like, ones that did make this list, but if it was other money, like, how does that fall into this process?
We'll get to that.
Yeah, I mean, we do want to get that out today, if there are some positions on here, because there were 76 new positions requested, and there are some other things we're going to talk about here at the end that aren't in the recommendation, but I certainly want to make sure we have a conversation, knowing that we have some wiggle room in revenue, but to make sure I hear your priorities, if there are some other positions in here, we'll have an opportunity to bring those back up.
Okay, so we want to wait on that conversation?
Or you can go ahead and throw it out now, and we can, I don't know, the chairman's prerogative, he's going to keep going, and then we'll.
Do we have other positions that are going to be in?
These are the end of the new positions that we're proposing for 28, 28 of the 76 is what we're proposing.
Do we have a listing of all the 76 in here, or?
We can get that for you by the end of the meeting.
Okay, let's just wait, we'll get the list, and then we'll, we'll throw it back in.